I'd like to call the July 23 City of Gardner Planning Commission to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are ready for the roll call, and I'm going to start with Commissioner McNair.
Mayor present.
Ford present.
Bowden present.
Roberts present.
Simmons Lee present.
Gardenhire present.
Mater present.
Okay. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the planning commission for study. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired on an item from either the planning commission or from the floor, that item will may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. Are there any items, any members of the commissioners, of the commission would like to be removed from the consent agenda? Are there any items from any member of the public that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda? So, seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner McNair and seconded by Commissioner Bowden. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven to zero. Okay, we are ready for the regular agenda item number one, but before we start this, I'm going to ask if any planning commissioner member has any ex parte communication regarding 1A or 1B, and I will start with Commissioner Mater.
Madam Chair, I have had ex parte communication with a few members of the public, just asking questions.
I've had no communications.
I have had no communications.
No communications.
No communications.
No communications.
I have talked to two people, just separately, in person. Okay, we are, let me make sure I'm doing this right. So, we are ready for regular items, agenda number one, Tallgrass Apartments located at the northwest corner of Moonlight Road and University Drive. We're going to start with 1A, which is Z-1903, PDP-19-03. We are going to hold a public hearing and consider rezoning from R3, RP3, and RP4 to RP3 with an associated preliminary development plan for Tallgrass Apartments. We will now open the public hearing. Oh wait, I'm sorry. We will now have staff presentation, and then we'll open the public hearing.
Good evening Commissioners, Michelle Laniger, Principal Planner. What I'm going to do is introduce item 1A, and you can go through the process with that, and then I will continue with 1B. Just some background information, on your screen outlined in blue are the subject properties. It does include two different properties. To the north is Copper Springs, a single-family residential development. To the west is Duplex Development. And to the northeast, those three lots are actually not within the city limits, they are county rural residential. And then, as you can see across Moonlight Road, there's some industrial-type uses, those are all in New Century Air Center. To the south of the subject properties is the city's new Justice Center, and then some vacant commercial properties. Just some background, the staff report talks about the history regarding the annexation and a few different plans that have been reviewed and approved over the years. This is the plan that was, well, a portion of the overall plan that was approved in 2003 for University Park. This included more property than the subject property, so I've kind of condensed it down. But what you can see is that it's plotted out into many duplex lots, so it's a continuation of what you currently see on Blair Street. Track Day in the middle was a pool and open space area clubhouse. And then, the parcel that is at the corner of Moonlight and University Drive was cited for commercial development. This portion of University Park included 132 duplex lots, which calculated out to 264 units, clubhouse, pool, all that I already talked about. Just last year, the beginning of last year, the planning commission saw the cottages at University Park. This only included really the area in the previous plan that was identified for duplex development. So, what this development showed was a mix of 91 lots. To the north, where compact, single-family housing, excuse me, those were small lots, single-family, most of them shared driveways across the property lines. Along the duplex on the west, and kind of in the middle area, and along Gretna on the south, were duplex lots. And then, in the eastern and southern portion, quad units or fourplexes were included. So, this plan included 160 lots. Same year, we did just a, not we, the planning commission approved a rezoning for that eastern parcel, which is on the corner of Moonlight and University, for Garden Walk. This was just the zoning, it was not any associated development plan or site plan. This was the concept plan that they included with the rezoning. It was for three apartment buildings and a clubhouse, common area in the middle with amenities, and that was to include 60 units. Again, this was only a concept form. And that one included 220 units, so together, those two projects total over 200 units. Regarding this zoning, staff findings for the rezoning itself, that while it's not consistent with the future land use map, which identifies low-density residential by density calculations, generalized density calculations, the project would be calculated out to about a medium-density residential. It is definitely consistent with the new residential growth areas regarding providing a variety of housing types for an area. This allows for people to, what we term, age in place. You can go from apartments to less dense, to single-family, and then back. Or you could, you know, stay in just one of the types of units, and then also includes the commercial aspect to support that residential. This project includes connectivity, as far as street connectivity and trail connectivity. Moonlight, on the west side of Moonlight, is cited for and currently includes a 10-foot trail that is to be extended to the north along the subject property. And then, Gretna is extended to the north of the property, and a new street, Evergreen, would also be included from University up to Gretna. There's also a great deal of open space with the project. Not only amenities for the project, but for the community, they'd have to put in the trail, they're extending the trail system throughout the development, that is definitely a plus for the area. The project provides for transition from lower-density residential to commercial to the south. Removal of the current restrictions would not likely affect nearby properties detrimentally, as higher density will offer a range of housing for the area and is likely to spur businesses and services in the area. You hear often from commercial developers that they're looking for a certain amount of rooftops before they are looking to build or to locate. And so, this helps to spur that commercial development to the south of University that's planned, to help support the neighborhood. There really isn't a lot of commercial development, basically, north of Madison. Relative gain with the current restrictions regarding economic development, public safety, public health, and welfare would be minimal, as a property would likely to remain undeveloped for an undetermined amount of time, and the hardship for the developers that the plan that is in place currently would have to be built by someone else's plan. This developer is not the proposal of the last plan, so to pick up somebody's brand-new plan and build that, if that's not something that you typically build, can be quite difficult. The proposal would not adversely affect the capacity or safety of any utilities, infrastructure, public services. Currently, the police department is right to the south. The fire station that would serve this area is in New Century Air Center. Water has been addressed with the utilities department. If you noted, in the sanitary sewer section, the utilities department has worked with the applicant to state that they need to be able to, that they can sewer the property and send it to Gardner within the sewer district. And then, a stormwater plan has been proposed and approved, and a traffic study has been completed and approved. The traffic study did not show that any improvements would be necessary off-site. This is the project.
Excuse me. Ladies and gentlemen, there are a lot of people in here. You have given the opportunity to make your public comments, and with your time, you can interrupt the staff report. If I have to ask you again, I would empty the room where you don't want your time, you make your time, and I will adjourn the commission, am I clear? There are too many of you to start talking, giggling, carrying on, and making side comments. Am I clear? Thank you. There are extra chairs on the rack back there, if you need them. You can bring them in. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the proposed preliminary development plan. This is one of many of the pages, but this is the overview of the project. In the upper northwestern corner, the applicant is proposing to include two duplexes to carry out kind of a transition from the existing duplexes into the apartment complex, and that would include four units. The rest of the project includes 31 two-to-three-story apartment buildings, which is 592 units, a maintenance building, which is at the far southeastern corner, a clubhouse and pool, which is in the south-central area, excuse me, 19 garages, which are six stalls each, trails around the development, and you'll see those, they kind of stick out on this in the thick black lines. There's a couple playgrounds, a dog park, some sport courts, and the large kind of blurbs that you see on the edges, there's one on the west and two on the east. Those are drainage and natural vegetation areas. Staff findings with the preliminary development plan, the plan reflects generally accepted and sound planning and urban design principles by providing a variety of housing types in the area and community, fiscally responsible extension of utilities. And located nearby employment corridors, you have New Century Air Center, which is expanding on the east, and then the logistics to the west. Additionally, there's a lot of traffic along Moonlight to and from Olathe along there. Benefits from any flexibility in the standards allow the project higher-end amenities for the residential, including garage structures. This is something that we are seeing more of. Saw this with the last apartment project that came before you. This is something that people really appreciate, if not for their vehicles, for their storage. The project will benefit the general public health, safety, and welfare of the community by providing park and open space, utility extensions, and public street extensions. This project does have seven deviations associated with it, that the applicant is requesting. Go through each one of them briefly. The first one, and these numbers correspond with the numbers in your staff report, if you want more of the details. The first one is that all buildings shall have direct sidewalk connections, at least five feet wide between each front entrance and the sidewalk. Applicant has proposed sidewalks along driveways throughout the development. And just give you example of, this is along Gretna, kind of in the middle of the project. Highlighted in blue is their sidewalks that they're proposing, they're proposing a lot of internal connectivity. The code is requesting that connections from the buildings to the public sidewalk and street are incorporated. This is something that the code is really kind of centered around, creating that public space around the public right-ofways, and creating space that is usable for everybody, and creating that connectivity, kind of a front-to-the-street idea, is what is kind of based on in the code. The elevations, you'll notice that the buildings are really double-sided. The lines through the buildings are breezeway connections, so there is the opportunity for those connections to occur to the street, pending topography. You're also going to have potentially people parking along the street, people connecting to the sidewalks, et cetera. Staff recommends that these connections be made where possible, and that is included as a condition of approval with the recommendation. Deviation two, these next two are ones that the commission has seen before, something that we as staff need to address in the Land Development Code. The standard is no more than one accessory building per lot. This is really more geared towards residential, as far as single-family and duplex. Wasn't really anticipated to have detached garage structures with apartments. This one has the 18 structures and one maintenance structure. Staff doesn't have any issues with this. In fact, we think this is something that probably needs to be readdressed in the code to make it more likely for multifamily developments to include those garage structures. And then, another associated deviation has to do with the maximum size of the accessory buildings, and how big each one can be. Obviously, with 18 of them, they're going to exceed this. Again, more applicable to single-family and duplex, staff does support this deviation. Deviation four, along any building facade abutting in a parking area, a minimum of eight-foot-wide sidewalk should be provided. Applicant has proposed six-foot sidewalks. Staff believes that the eight-foot provides for the overhang of the cars, it provides for the passing of people that are going to and from their vehicles to the buildings. So, staff supports the eight-foot wide and makes that a recommended commission, condition of approval. Deviation five, again, dealing with sidewalks, a primary route between the street or parking area and the building entrance, a minimum of eight feet wide. Proposed is five and six feet wide, varies. Again, staff believes that, you know, creating that walkway so that people can pass when you have your arms full of groceries, and when people hopefully step aside and hold open doors, you're not standing in the grass. Creating those identified walkways and not making them so tight that it feels uncomfortable, especially if you have, you know, like I said, your arms full, you have dogs, you have strollers, you have wheelchairs, things like that, to allow for that to comfortably pass. This is a condition of approval that's recommended to maintain the eight feet wide. Number six, an additional sidewalks. Again, this is, deals with parking and access to the buildings, proposed at six feet wide and eight feet wide. So, staff is really trying to support those walkways with comfortable passing, allowing for the overhang of the vehicles, and all of that with all three of these deviations, and supporting the maintenance, maintain the eight feet wide. Last deviation regarding bicycle parking, again, this is another one that we've seen before that staff thinks needs to be readdressed. The standard is one per dwelling unit, one bicycle parking place, and 5% of the required vehicle spaces for the entertainment, basically the clubhouse use. That would be 593 bicycle parking stalls. Proposed is 102 bicycle stalls, and those spread out throughout the development and including by the clubhouse. A lot of people that have bicycles, long-term parking, will either bring them in or store them in a garage. Staff feels that 102 spaces is sufficient for the site. Staff does recommend approval of the rezoning to RP3 and the associated preliminary development plan. I want to make sure the staff report got mixed around with all the RP numbers, it should be rezoning to RP3, not RP4. So, the suggested motion for the applications recommend approval. The conditions recommended are to revise the plan to show five-foot sidewalk connections from the buildings that front and are adjacent to streets to the public sidewalk where feasible due to topography. Revise the plans to show eight-foot-wide sidewalks along any building facade abutting in a parking area. Revise the plans to show eight-foot sidewalks on primary routes between the street parking area and the building entrance. Number four, revise the plans to show eight-foot-wide sidewalks along any parking with vehicle overhang. Number five, revise the plan to the satisfaction of the utilities department to show all sanitary sewer lines flowed to Gardner facilities, including a lift station if necessary. Number six, revise the duplex unit footprint floor plans to provide for no more than 25% of the front facade as a garage. This is something I didn't touch on in the presentation, but included were footprints on the plans and floor plans for the proposed duplexes. Those did not meet the limits for 25% of the front facade being garage. They were almost 75% garage in the front, so those will need to be revised. And staff recommends the planning commission forward the recommendation for approval to the governing body.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're ready for the hearing. We will now open the public hearing. If anyone would like to comment on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the public record. Individuals are allotted three minutes, or an individual representing a group is allotted seven minutes. Please be courteous, no personal tax, and stay on topic. We are ready for public, we're good, oh wait, sorry, hold on. Oh, so the public hearing is open, we're ready for public comment.
Hi, my name is George Rifford. I just recently moved to the neighborhood in Copper Springs. Sure, George Rifford. R-I-F-F-O-R-D.
You may have to speak closer to the mic.
Okay, that's fine. I'll start over. My name is George Rifford. I just recently moved into the Copper Springs addition about a month and a half ago. I just had a few questions. I have three minutes, correct? I have three minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Is the developer present tonight? Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry, we're at the Copper Springs.
Is it, I'm sorry, Tallgrass developer present?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. I'm just, I'm, the question, I'll just ask the questions, then maybe I can get the answers later. I'm just curious if the developer has built in Gardner in the past, and if so, is the city of Gardner planning on bonding this developer to make sure that the, all the, everything that was shown up above actually gets completed to fruition? And then, also, I'm curious if the developer has designed a project of this scope and scale in the past, anywhere, and what the success rate of that project was? And then, finally, and I'm not sure if this is actually relevant, or if this is outside the scope for this audience, but has anybody done a property tax revenue assessment for this type of a project to the entire, to, for either the city of Gardner or Johnson County? In other words, I know we're bringing in 598 units. In other words, I know we're bringing 598 units in additional commercial sale, commercial revenue, property tax. However, what type of an impact could this possibly have on the outlying property tax assessments to the neighborhoods surrounding it? So I will leave my questions at that.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kellyanne Johnson. I live at 16407 Blair. I just recently moved in approximately a year ago. I retired as a firefighter paramedic with 30 years of service and I chose Gardner to be the community that I wanted to retire to. I listened to this young lady speak up here and I'm very concerned about public safety, especially with my experience. Yes, it's wonderful that the fire department is in Century and the police department is across the street, but just because you have those buildings there does not mean that you have enough equipment and personnel. We're talking about that we're going to have roughly 600 units. That means you're going to have approximately two to four people in each unit if they abide by the laws that they're supposed to. You're talking that you're going to have approximately 600 vehicles, if not up to 1,200. You're talking that you're going to have approximately 300 children, up to 600 children in that community. Are you prepared for the busing, the schooling, and the safety that is going to be required to protect that new community if you put them there? I'm also concerned about my property taxes. I took everything that I earned and put it into that home as my retirement home that I plan to spend. I put my life savings into that house that I worked for as I worked 30 years serving the community. And now my property value is going to go down because of having apartments put back there. I know I'm not the only one that feels that way. I've talked with my neighbors who are also concerned about that. I'm concerned about the fact that traffic that's going to come off of university through Blair to go into the back of the apartment complex. Emergency vehicles will have to have a way in and out of that apartment complex. I don't think, also, I go to work every morning and leaving a university onto moonlight. Getting onto moonlight as is right now can be difficult. And I can't imagine what it's going to be like when you have that much traffic all trying to get out onto moonlight, especially without a traffic light. I don't think this has been well planned and I don't think it fits the community. You have a ton of houses that are going up and people are buying them right and left. And you have plenty of apartment complexes in this community already. So I think you need to really think seriously about the safety that you're providing for this community because I don't think you have enough firefighters and police to cover the new community that you want to put there. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tim Cooper. I live at 28324 West 162nd Terrace in Copper Springs. I have a few concerns about this apartment complex. One, I'm a father of two boys, they're two and a half, they like to play. I'm certain most of you have kids up here. The last thing I need is for someone to run over one of my kids. I'm concerned with adding, you know, if you look at the 596 units, if you average one and a half cars per unit, what is that, 894 vehicles? That's a lot of vehicles coming through my neighborhood. That's not why I moved to Gardner. I had choices. I could look in Oakwood Park, I could look in Spring Hill, I could look in Olathe where I came from. But I chose Gardner because of the quietness and the quaintness of this town. That's not the case with 890, or excuse me, 596 units. I am concerned about the safety of my kids. I'm also concerned about my dollars. I came here because I felt I was getting a better bank for my buck, I was getting value. 596 units is not going to help my property tax. I appreciate the commission and everything she had to say about the infrastructure being there and, you know, the sewers are going to be perfect and it's going to work out here, we're going to make the sidewalks great, that's fine, but what are you doing for my tax dollars? And my property tax and my value of my home? What are you doing there? I've got no reassurance from anyone about what's going to happen at that point in time. And I didn't buy this house in the fact just to see the value drop or to stay stagnant. I'm just like you all, I'm an American, I like to see my dollar go up and that's why I bought my house. And so, but I've received, and I don't know if, maybe I heard some or missed something, but in all of the presentation, I saw nothing about any kind of property assessments, what was going to be affected. I did my research before coming here and I can list five communities where things like this happened and then the people in those communities saw their houses either stay stagnant or they even dropped in value. And that's just, I, you know, I would hope that before you all vote on this or you decide one way or the other, that someone does an assessment and then reassures us or at least lets, let us know who are homeowners in this community, what's going to happen. That's all I ask. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Michael Kane. Recently moved into 28318 West 162nd Street in Copper Springs. I'll reiterate everything everybody else in the area has said. We're all concerned about traffic. You can't put that many cars on a two-lane street that's surrounded by kids playing and having fun without having dangers. It's just not going to happen. I'm also very concerned about the property values. We looked around a lot. There are not a lot of places in Gardner to buy a higher-end home. There's not. So now we want to put an apartment complex right next to one of the most thriving areas? Excuse me, not a good public speaker. It just seems like a really poor decision to me to try and do something like that. As it is south of there, you've got, I can't remember the name of the community, but it's another set of nice homes. So we're going to drive all of these property values down, drive in a whole bunch more cars, take up a whole lot of sewer, water, internet, cause a lot of infrastructure problems. For what? That's it, thank you.
Hi, my name is David Gardino. I live on 16415 Blair Street. And, you know, I agree with everything you're saying. Matter of fact, they already made the points that I wanted to. One thing that I do want to add is they're talking three stories. That's 45 feet tall. That's going to look like a skyscraper in that neighborhood. I think we're going way too tall on that. You know, plus all the, all the other issues with the traffic and things like that I totally agree on. But I think we are going way too tall on it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anthony Haug. I live at 28404 West 162nd Terrace. And I want to interject kind of what everybody else has already said here too, there's a lot of major concerns here. Plus I would have a lot of concerns about some of the actual studies that have been done. I find it hard to believe that we've done a traffic study that an additional thousand-plus cars or 600-plus cars is not going to impact that area. I, I struggle to turn left onto moonlight going north on a regular basis. It takes a few minutes sometimes during morning rush hour. Adding a lot more cars to that is not going to help the matter. Also utilities, I, I haven't seen the studies. I have concerns. You know, I don't want to see my water pressure go, I don't want to see my, you know, utility bills go through the roof to actually pay for this development. And just in general too, traffic is another major concern that we've all brought up already. Property value is a big one. I, I've lived in Lenexa near great communities that are high-end, that bring a lot. But then I've also seen the communities that are middle-range, you know, and come into a neighborhood with $350,000 homes and just plateau that. I want to see my property values go up. I want to make money on my investment, as sure as all of you do as well. And the concern that we're having is that this is not going to enable that to happen long-term. There's a lot more houses that are going to be built in that area. And so I would like to see us to continue to build those homes and build a great community up there. Just as I said before, you know, this is one of the high-end neighborhoods of Gardner and they're building them left and right. Martins probably can't build them fast enough. Everyone I see, it goes up for sale in the middle of construction. So I don't want to see that economic, you know, train stop because of an apartment complex. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Carmen Gardino. I live at 16415. My concern here, I agree with everything that has been spoken here. I am dead-set against this project going forward. My concern is with the noise level. No one talked about that. I lived for five months in an apartment building that was supposed to be a better one here in Gardner before I bought my home. The noise was terrible. People pulling in and out of there, so many cars, motorcycles, the loud talking, the loud music, the garbage everywhere because they didn't care. I don't want that in my backyard. I want to come home at night and have a nice, quiet neighborhood. I chose Gardner because there were very few apartment buildings here and I did not want to live near one. And now you're thinking about putting one in my backyard. I am against it. Please don't do this.
Hi, I'm Ange Woodward and I live at 28507 West 162nd Place. We have raised our kids here and they go to school here. We did move out to, we just built our house here ago. We went to the subdivision, we did because it was not busy, it was quiet, friendly, close-knit neighborhood. If you build houses in Gardner instead of apartments, you're invested in your community. You're going to stay here. Your kids are going to go to school here, your grandkids, you know, and you stay within the community. And when you have apartments, that doesn't necessarily happen because you're, you're not locked in like that. You're not, you're free to move whenever you would like to. My biggest concern is right now we're talking about, yes, this will give us more opportunities, but didn't we just recently pass the Waverly Plaza that's not even been built yet? So do we know how this is really even going to work? Do we even really need these apartments here in Gardner? Another concern that I really have is that Gardner is very much landlocked. We, we don't have a lot of space to build out. With all these apartments coming in, do we have the space to build the schools? And my biggest concern is, I love that we have one high school. And eventually, if this continues to grow like this, we're going to have two and that's going to totally divide the town. I mean, could you imagine your kids not going to Gardner High School? Instead, they're going to go to a different school because my boys would be furious. Last two things I have is, you know, we're talking high-end apartments, but when we're looking at it, it's really middle-of-the-range. It's going to bring in a lot more crime rate and I know they talked about that as well. And accommodating more traffic. Right now, I know numerous neighbors that have already called police because kids are going up and down that road and there are lots of little kids there and that worries me. My dog almost got hit because it got out. So not even having the stoplight and having all of those extra people is going to really contribute. It's going to be a major concern for everyone and someone's going to get hurt and that's going to, it's not going to be good for someone. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Megan Kane. I also live at three, I'm sorry, 28318 West 162nd Street in Copper Springs. I can concur with everything that was said here tonight by other members of this audience with the tax loss, the crime rate. I highly agree with, when you add 1,500-plus people, including adults and children, to get the coverage for that, is there a plan? One other question I'd like to ask is that in the staff review, it said that this is a variety of housing types and it's bringing that diversity. It sounds to me like it's more of just a one-sided, this is going to be an apartment complex. The developers also brought in and made a point about the dog park and the smaller buildings and the trails. Is that going to honestly be open to the public? And if so, have they taken accommodations for the parking for the public and the use of, for the public? And my other question would then be, again, the schools. I have a small child who is looking forward to going to Gardner High School. Is this something that is going to warrant more schools? I know that we just got done with, you know, meetings with the city in regards to changing some of the school boundaries because our elementaries were full and at capacity. Apartments usually mean younger families in most cases and younger families bring a lot more children. Has that been addressed and thought about? That's all I'm asking you to think about. Thank you.
My name is Alicia Parker and I live at 28321 West 162nd Terrace. And I'm speaking as a teacher. I am a public educator in Blue Valley School District. My husband and I moved to Gardner six years ago. We lived on the other side of town and when we bought our house, we had full intention to stay there until we had kids ready for school. And I was going to get our kids out of the Gardner public school system because I wanted them as a teacher in Blue Valley, Olathe, or Shawnee Mission. We fell in love with Gardner. I did my research, I started trusting the Gardner School Districts and in spite of what so many people in Blue Valley told me, they said, "You're going to bring your kid over here, right? You're not going to send them there." And I said, "No, we're going to have our kid in Gardner because I'm starting to really build trust in this school district and the system and the city." Now I'm starting to wonder if we shouldn't have built in Copper Springs. Should we have moved to Olathe or Lenexa or Overland Park where my kids could get a good education? I'm not saying they're not going to get a good education, but if there's apartments being built as a teacher, the more apartments you get around a school district, oftentimes districts or schools go down to Title I mentality. If you look at school districts and the education world and you're applying for jobs, low-income schools are the last to fill with teachers. So the quality of teachers you're going to have at Gardner Elementary will go down if the clientele goes down and that's a concern of ours. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Bob Montgomery. I live at 107 West Cedar in Olathe, Kansas. I just wanted to take a little bit different of an approach tonight. Excuse me. Anyway, I was, I'm, I am the realtor for Mr. Blakely that is buying the property, but I've also been a city councilman in Olathe. I was there for 17 years and that started 25 years ago. I haven't heard anything tonight that I didn't hear when I was on the council. And the complaints and our concerns of the citizens are normal, that's, that's usual. But when I started there 25 years ago, we weren't that much different than Gardner. And over time, we had the same fears. We even had fears and concerns when we started putting trail systems through the city of Olathe. Olathe has grown tremendously over that 25 years and I grew up there. But those fears never came true. All the concerns of lower income, less people, we did the studies on the apartment buildings and it's, it's city people, it's police, fire, turning, young people starting out. And it kind of makes an inclusive part for the, for the whole community that grows. And you do need accounts when you want to build your commercial property. I've heard some of the comments tonight like, you know, the kids on the street. Well, University Drive, no houses back up to University Drive. The residential areas have their own streets. The apartment complex has all of its own entries. And so, you know, there's, there's a place for everybody to live and I think these people will come out of the apartment buildings and they'll be building in the, or buying in the same areas. Our school districts, we went through the same questionnaires. We went through more studies on evaluation. I'm a realor, I've been a realor for 41 years. I never saw a property value go down next to an apartment complex in the city of Olathe. Didn't happen. So property values continue to grow and So property values continue to grow and I think, I know these are the normal fears and concerns. I've heard them on a lot of different projects. So I just hope you'll keep in mind that I think it'd be an asset to the community. And there's another thing that would really play a big difference in any reference that someone said that property values go down or there's trouble with crime is property management and keeping the properties up. Well, the Blakely's own two wonderful apartments in the city of Olathe that maintain their property well. Property values have not go down. So, you know, if you've got poor management, that could happen. But I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners John Duggan, 9101 West 110th Street, Overland Park, Kansas. I'm here on behalf of Martins Family Enterprises, who's the developer of Copper Springs. And obviously, the neighbors have spoken passionately about their fears and concerns, but I think what we all need to understand is the process. This is the developer's first stab at getting something approved, and oftentimes, this is where negotiations begin. And I think this is a plan that's ineffective for several reasons. First of all, you are abutting 16-unit and 24-unit apartment buildings in the backyards of single-family residential in Copper Springs. That is a bad plan. That is a bad plan. That is a bad plan. You obviously should have a transition between single-family and 16- and 24-unit buildings. That would be standard for about any developer that comes before you. In fact, the densities in this community, the apartment community, are going to be tripled. The staff report makes crystal clear that the approved densities are roughly 5.1 units per acre today. This plan is going to go to roughly 13.84 units per acre. There's 220 units that are approved right now. It's going to be skyrocketing on a density level. And when you do that, there's 43 acres here, there's plenty of room to create transitions between single-family residential homes and apartment homes. You can have duplexes. You can have other forms of transition. And that's what my client desires, is that there be a transition. You need to be careful because you're going to end up with an unintended consequence tonight if you approve the plan. That unintended consequence is you want as many people buying $400,000 houses in Gardner as you can get. Bottom line, end of story, period. You can get apartments any day of the week. You can get apartments because apartment developers are struggling to find places to build them in Olathe and Lenexa and anywhere else. They're going to be coming to Gardner, you can bet on it. But developers that come in and build subdivisions and make substantial investments like the Martins Family Enterprises did, and these homeowners that have spent $400,000 of their money to build in your community, guess what they're going to do the next time somebody comes in and wants to start creeping up the price points in Gardner to 450 or 475 or 500? That developer and that homeowner, which you just heard from these people, are going to back away. Why? Because somebody walked into your community and put up an apartment complex right next door in their backyard and let them build two-story or three-story buildings that they'd be looking out their backyard over their grills and seeing those big buildings right in their backyard. You can tell the developer, happens every day of the week, all over Kansas City, I've appeared in virtually every municipality in this metropolitan area. You tell the developer, "Get a little bit better plan. We need some transition. We're not going to scare away what really is what we want, is 400 to 425 to $500,000 homes. The last thing we want to do is scare away those developers and those homeowners from buying in communities in the future because even though it's approved for duplexes, 220 units, we can change that overnight and put up 600 units right in your backyard and there's not a darn thing we'll do to protect your property value." That is a huge mistake for your city. Every other town in this metropolitan would send the message to the developer, "Not going to get this one done. Go back, create some transitions, come up with a better plan, and come back to us with something." We're not opposed to multifamily. It's a zoned multifamily right now. But to increase the densities threefold, put these big buildings in people's backyards, you're going to buy an unintended consequence which you don't want. That's basically what we need to point out to you. Thanks for your time.
I think Todd's going to bring up the plan so we can refer to that as we talk. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Todd Blakely. I'm here tonight with our team, Tony Yodrich, who's the manager of our properties, Mark Huggins, Todd Allenbrand with Payne &amp; Brockway Civil Engineers, Pete Offerman with Offerman Land Design, and Bob Montgomery, who just spoke a few minutes ago with Montgomery Real Before I say a brief few comments about why we're here tonight and what we'd like to try to accomplish, our team would like to thank staff. This has been about a four-month process. Through that process, they have been cordial, they've been welcoming, very professional. And most importantly to us, it seems to us as if they've been interested in what we had to say. So we appreciate their time and effort in preparing their staff comments and their report for you tonight. Kind of a brief history of how we came upon this site. We've been looking in Gardner for about two years for the proper, right, a great location to build a luxury multifamily community. And we finally found what we think is an ideal site for that. Some of the things we looked for is, this site is next to nearly 4,500 jobs in New Century. It's close to I-35, 56 Highway and 167 Street, great access for the folks who might live here. And it's also near retail, the kind of things that people want to visit every week, grocery store, pharmacy. And we are within walking distance of Casey's Pizza. We also like this site because it's large enough to spread our buildings out and give it a neighborhood feel, which you can see from the plan, there's a tremendous amount of green space, open space, and civic rec space that our residents could take advantage of. This also provides an abundant amount of room for amenities, which would include the clubhouse, 24-hour fitness, resort-style pool, sports court, dog park, and multiple picnic and barbecue areas. And the walking trail that rings this property is critical to us. We like connectivity just as much as Gardner. It helps connect the private and public walkways to the trail itself. In essence, we want Tall Grass to be the kind of community you drive into and it feels like a neighborhood with all the amenities you could ask for. While we're excited about this proposal, we know that Mr. Martins and others apparently are not so excited about it. We reached out to Phil early on with our first concept plan, and that plan showed four buildings along the north next to Copper Springs. Without any request by anybody, without meeting with anyone, we made the compromise to reduce that to three buildings. And you can see what that's accomplished for us. It's opened up a great deal of civic space, two large areas in between the buildings. But also important, please notice that the apartment buildings are set back 50 feet from our neighbors to the north. This creates a great deal of separation that you don't necessarily find with multifamily, other lower-density multifamily duplex, triplex, or even single-family homes. This 50-foot allows for a generous tree buffer and it allows us to put the walking trail in, the configuration that we'd like to do. While our engineers were working on the details of the plan, Mr. Yodrich and I set about addressing the typical concerns that we hear from our neighbors. I've been doing this for over 25 years and we've heard every one of these concerns before. We met with the police department, Captains Jay Belcher, Captain Lee Trout, and Sergeant Benz. We reviewed this plan. They have no concerns about additional crime that would be coming to this area because of the apartments that would be built here. We met with Bruce Crackl with the school district. He said there is plenty of capacity to accommodate all the schoolchildren that might come from this apartment community, and there will be very few. If our history repeats itself, one in two veteran apartments do not generate a great deal of school-aged children. There is capacity in the Feeder Elementary School for those kids. We met with Jerry Holly with Fire District Number One. He has no concerns with regard to how first responders could get in and around this apartment community or how it would affect our neighbors surrounding the community. We engaged Amy McCurdy. She did a traffic impact study. And with this project being completely finished, there would be an acceptable level of service on the neighboring streets. This is the professionals' take on this. This is not our word. This is not our report. We didn't even know Amy McCurdy before we hired her. This is her professional opinion. One comment that we get all the time is that you build apartments next to my house and you're going to decrease my home value. That's absolutely untrue, unequivocally untrue. But to prove it, because we thought there'd be some pushback tonight, we engaged Valbridge Property Advisors to conduct for us a value impact study report. The conclusion of this report, and it's much like an appraisal, "The proposed Tall Grass apartment development will not measurably impact the value of surrounding single-family homes." These are facts. This isn't conjecture, it's not hypothesis, we're not fear-mongering, and we're not going to stand up here and threaten this commission or anyone else in the city. This is the way it is. We like Gardner. We like the future that we see here, and we want to be a part of it. And to address some of the questions that I think the first gentleman who stood up asked, "We do have experience developing large apartment communities. We have two in Olathe, one 728 units, the other's 510 units. They both operate at at or above 98% occupancy, and they have since they've been built. One's 25 years old, the other's 20 years old. The reason they do so well is because we manage them well. And we expect to manage this property, if it's approved, extremely well." This is a copy of our lease and attached to it are all our rules and regulations. We abide by every local, state, federal law, and it's a fair lease, but it's a very tight lease. And it has to be because that's the way we want to manage the property, we want to keep its value up, and we want to protect the residents who live there. I'm more than happy to answer any questions. We appreciate your time. We'd love to be in this city. We'd love to be a developer here. No, we've not developed here before, but I'm very familiar with Gardner. We would love the opportunity, so.
Any questions for the applicant from the Fishers?
I have a question.
Okay. Hold on. You, we can't interact with questions back and forth like that. You have time to come up and give a public comment, and that's it. I'm sorry. Now, the applicant may answer some questions, but we can't answer questions or staff can't. Yeah, we're, I'm still at applicant presentation. I haven't even gotten to the closing of the public hearing yet.
Can I just get clarification on what you're saying? So if we asked a que, if we had a public speech before, we can't ask questions now? Or is that later?
It's not really a back-and-forth type of situation with questions. It's you provide your public comment, the applicant provides their presentation, the commissioners can ask questions. We ask if there's any other comments, and then we'll close the public hearing. And then we'll close the public hearing. Is that correct?
So, just to be clear, there is a public hearing portion which is dedicated exclusively to applicant presentation, presentation of questions from the public. Questions or presentations from the public are presented during the public hearing. After the public hearing is closed, there is no additional questions or comments that are taken from the public. Public hearing is still currently open. The applicant has given their presentation, but if the chair elects to receive additional public comment, which can, as you saw earlier, there were questions posed, once we close the public hearing, staff is given an opportunity to attempt to respond to that. There will also be a time after the close of the public hearing for the planning commissioners to pose questions to planning staff as well as to the applicant. That is outside of the public hearing process.
Thank you. Thank you for helping us clarify that. So, we've had applicant presentation, and we have time, on my script it says that we can have commissioner questions for the applicant right now during the public hearing.
So didn't we stop the public hearing?
No, we're still during, we haven't closed the public hearing yet.
You can still provide commentary?
Correct.
So, Lydia can provide a comment then?
Right. We are, we will ask for additional questions from the public after we, the commissioners have a chance to ask the applicant questions. So, do the commissioners have any questions at this time for the applicant while he's up here?
I don't have any at this time.
If we don't ask questions now, can we ask questions later after the public hearing is closed?
Yes.
You can, although staff will, should, or attempt to respond to those. The applicant can also respond to those outside of the public hearing.
No questions at this time?
I don't have any at this time.
Not at this time?
Not at this time. Not at this time.
Okay. So we reserve the right to ask you questions a little later.
Great. Thanks.
Okay. Are there any others wishing to speak from the public? Please, please, as before, please come up, state your name, address, and we welcome any additional comments.
Hi, my name is Marla Anderson and I live at 28400 West 162nd Terrace. I just want to ask all of you, if you've not been our neighborhood, to please drive through. You can look at this plan, and it, it looks nice, but when you drive through there, it is not that big. Please look at the space and don't just look at it on a print. Because sometimes in face or real-time looks different than something on a print. That's all I ask from you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brian Keeney. I live at 28605 West 162nd Place. I'm in law enforcement. I just have a question that I'd like to pose to the gentleman. I don't know you. I don't know the way you do your plans. I've dealt with enough apartment complexes in my 23-year career to know that if you don't fill your places, there's two choices. You either lower your cost of your rent, which brings in the ones we're worried about, or the government comes knocking and there's a chance of Section 8. I think that's a big concern of ours, is are you guys open to allow Section 8 into your apartment complexes? I think we'd like to know if that's an actual opportunity or not, because I think obviously we don't, from what you've heard, and I would not like that. So, thank you.
Is that a question I can answer?
I think so, right?
Appropriately.
Is that?
He can come back up and answer it as part of the public hearing process. I think probably the best way to proceed is for anyone who's got questions from the applicant after the applicant's presentation to present them now, so we don't have this back and forth.
Okay.
And then the applicant is given one opportunity to come up and respond to those.
Okay. So are there any additional questions for the applicant?
What's the average price per unit?
I'm sorry, you'll have to come up to the podium and state your name again and address.
Anthony Haug, 28404 West 162nd Terrace. What is the average price per unit we're looking at here? When you say luxury apartments, what does that mean? You know, I'm looking at some of the plans back there and I feel like the apartments on the other side of town, which aren't luxury, which are just middle of the range. So I'd like to know some information about the specifics of what he plans to do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Bill Pelkey. I live at 16250 Blair Court. I've lived here roughly 25 years and own all the school system. I just moved from across town because we're having issues out at the house that we had before. And my first question is to you all about the impact of if you guys are able to maintain the roads and anything else that would go along with it. Because I can tell you now, I used to live on the other side of town by where Star Gas Station is, and you guys haven't been able to actually fix any of the flooding issues or any of the roads there. And we've owned that house for literally 25 years. Now, granted, I love Gardner and I've been here for most of my life. That's why we decided to build on the other side of Gardner. One thing that, and I'm a man of reason, have we also assessed different areas and other options before deciding to set it up against a $400,000 apartment home? Because that's what kind of put me there, is because I enjoy some of the amenities. Because I will tell you now, if I'm looking at an apartment complex, not why I built a house, and I will move out of Gardner for the first time in 25 years, so. That's all I got.
Megan Kane, 3...
And for the applicant, I have these questions. What is the average rent that they're looking to provide? They mentioned that the amount of jobs that are to New Century and out to the south of us, a lot of those are factories and, and, you know, what, what is their kind of average income that they're looking at because of the concern of Section 8 and those things? They say it's only 50 feet from the north. 50 feet is not that much when you think about it. Also, I understand that you hired Amy McCarty, but that's just it. It was hired. She is then employed by you, so I'd like to know if we're going to be able to see those reports as well as from Valbridge Property Advisors. If they were hired by you, have, has the city done anything to do some of that research from a city-based point? Also, one last question would be, has there been any studies on the current apartment complexes here and what their occupancy is? Are they at full capacity? Is this something else that Gardner needs? If they're not at full capacity, what's to say that that would be at full capacity and benefit us at that point? Thank you.
Okay. I'll do this right now. My name is Carmen Gardino. I live at 16415 Blair Street here in Gardner. My question to the gentleman is, what are the names of your two properties? The one you've had for 25 years and the other one for 20 years? You're so proud of them, and you're saying that you're running them exceptionally well? Well, I want to know what their names are, because I'd like to take a drive over there and look at those properties and see what they look like. And are those types of properties, is that what you're going to build in my backyard? So I would like the addresses, and I want to see what those two properties are that you say they're running so well. Thank you.
Michael Kane again at 28318 West 162nd Street. The one question I had is, it was mentioned that the study showed that it would be an acceptable level of traffic in the area, but I would like to know what an acceptable level of traffic is, because our opinion in Gardner might be different than that in Olathe. Thank you.
Somebody left a phone, by the way. Somebody leave a phone? Phone? All right.
Thank you.
Hi, George River, 28604 West 162nd Place. I just came back up. I want to make sure that my questions were addressed during the Q and A session versus in the beginning. So, thank you to the developer for answering some of those questions already. I think the two questions I would have that I just want to make sure are addressed is, number one, the bonding issue. That really concerns me. I was in Genesis Creek Estates, moved in there in 2005. The developer picked up and bailed on the development right before Phase 2 was finished and Phase 3 hadn't started. I joined the HOA. We took over the HOA, and we were stuck with the bill to complete the, the squail behind my, behind, or the rent through the property. Fortunately, the city commission helped us with that, but my point is this, that the city, the taxpayers had to pay for that because the developer did not complete the project. So that's a concern, and that's my question on the bonding. The second question I have is on the property tax, the revenue assessment study, and I, and I understand, I understand the argument on the property taxes and how it doesn't impact. My question really is, building, what is the difference between building a 400-plus thousand dollar house and the property taxes that that house generates in comparison to this, these 598 units? In other words, can you actually generate more property taxes off of the 400,000-plus houses versus this development? That would be my question. Thank you.
I think we're getting closer to the end. My name is Phil Martins. Martins Family Enterprises, 19,000 West 158th Street, Olathe, Kansas. I'm the developer of Copper Springs. As you all well know or may know, that just a few years ago, that started out with 10-foot weeds, that you couldn't even go through the street to drive through to University Drive into the existing Copper Springs. That's been resolved. We put in your streets for you at our cost and the homeowner's cost behind you, and we've taken it over and made it a great neighborhood. That's why they're selling so well, and that's why everybody out here has come to the meeting here. They're scared. We understand that 220 was approved, and we know that, but 220 versus almost 600 is a difference. So the density is totally different, and for the, the impact, not being an impact on traffic, and I can, you know, Todd, I've been in business 40 years, and I'm here to tell you, I can get a study report tomorrow too, on your desk, stating just the opposite. It does take effect. It does affect prices. We've all know the game, but you can get a report to say anything at that point. So, you know, don't, don't look at it like that, because it happens. And I'm sure during the downturn, I guarantee it happened. And who wants to buy a house, you know, facing a apartment complex? You know what? I bought the property and the rest of the property for, you know, 200 homes over there. And I did, I bought it with the duplexes in mind. I'm okay with that. They were pretty nice duplexes. Now they're even putting little duplexes in with single-car garages, not even two-car garages, not to match the rest and blend in even the duplexes. They're not even trying to do, oh, the buffer zone's 50 feet. Okay. You know what? It's 60 feet from home plate to the pitcher's mound. I could still play catch with my homeowners across the way to the apartments. So that might, I guess that's a benefit if you look at it that way. To me, luxurious apartment is not lapsed siding. It has very little stone. There's zero stucco. There's nothing luxurious about these. This is what you're going to look like from the backyard of my homeowners' houses that go clear up to $450,000. If that's luxurious, we got a problem. But keep in mind, in this whole process, we've had no neighborhood meetings, so we could bring up all this stuff before. They could calm our, all the fears back in this room. And how many people are here tonight show you that theirs, don't just say yes vote and say, okay, we're done with the next, you know, what? Think about it. Abstain, you know? Make a move to the next meeting. Go out there and look. Get in your cars. Go out and take a look at it rather than voting just yes or no, because that's not going to help us at all. So, I think that's, you know, the main thing is, is keep in mind that this is going to definitely affect. You don't put houses, single family, right up next to apartments. It's a buffer zone. There's no buffer zone. Play catch might work, but you know what? How about put a fence along the whole property line if it's so luxurious? And let's, you know, create a real buffer zone or something to here to get, you know, twice as many people in there, let alone 220 versus almost 600. That's ridiculous. And I'm here to tell you, you better get ready for a street light on Moonlight, and you better get a street, a street light for 167th, because they're both going to need it. And guess who's going to pay for it? The city. That's all I have.
These people, I am really short. My name is Lydia Kepler. I'm at 16255 Blair Court. I am speaking for a couple people, so I get seven minutes, because I have a lot of just notes, so I'm sorry. I don't know how, what I'm doing, but concerns I have is traffic, and I agree with a lot of what people have said, and I understand if there has been, I, a report done. I would love to see that as well. I would love to see how they figure out the numbers, because if you drive back, you will be, you, you will see how many kids, that's, it's the one thing. We moved from St. John's Trace, which is over by the new Beverly Place apartments that are going in. Our subdivision was also one where we were the fifth house when it, when it built, and we turned around and market crashed, everything stopped, and now they start, and then they started building last year the smaller rental homes. We wanted to move forward. They're fantastic. It's a great neighborhood still, but it's not, we, we've worked really hard to be able to do something where we're, that we can, we can get something nicer. My husband's from Gardner. I'm not. I'm from Kansas City. He, he graduated in 92. He, his class was 73 people. To him, Gardner is exploded. That being said, he, he wants to stay. We want to stay. He wants his kids here. Ange talked about the schools. It would kill him if we, if our kids ended up at a different school, whether it's, and I understand that that's down the road, but it is still something that, to be honest, a lot of people from Gardner stay here, which I have found, because I am the outsider. I don't know everybody's cousins, that, that everyone, people want to stay. But as the gentleman, I think from Olathe, I think maybe with, he had said he'd been on city councils before, said, oh, we had this in Olathe. We, you know, it turned out fine. The key is, is when I was in Kansas City, the Great Mall was, I mean, like pack-a-snak drive. It was out there. It was so far. It's huge now. I don't want to be in Olathe. I don't, I mean, I don't want to be in that town. I don't want to be in that big of a city. I guess my feeling is, is we've always felt like we wanted the small town. This is as close as we can get to the city and still be in a small town. I am concerned about the fact that we are, we do have larger value houses, and then we have one row of duplexes as our transition to then 600 apartments. I am one of them that actually 10 feet, my yard is very awkward, and I have 10 feet that is going to be this, this property. It concerns me with my kids in general of, when we, I agree, when we say 50 feet, even if it's 50 feet from my yard, I mean, that's here. It's not that far. I'm all for apartments. I've, I've lived in them, tons of them, all through Kansas City. I just feel like our neighborhood has really, a lot of the people, we all can relate to each other, we're actually a really close-knit neighborhood, because we're all like, oh, do you remember when? We've all worked really hard to do something that was different, and there is not a lot of higher-end housing developments in Gardner. And I, we worked really hard to get here, and then to have the idea of having a, an apartment complex that's three stories right out my back windows, because I, it's, it's unsettling. So, going back, because I'm getting sidetracked. I talked about the 50 feet. I am concerned with the, with the traffic. I, I am concerned with the schools. I, we came from Madison. We actually still transferred to Madison, just because my kids have one more year left. We just moved over to Copper Springs, so they are going to be transferring, but then we are a problem with the pods. We are contributing to that, so I'm very sorry. But they will be out soon. The trail connectivity, I am, I agree with the public spaces, do, if, if there are these public and green spaces that are going to help our community, do we have parking? And then where's that coming into play? I also have a concern with general water drain, like storm draining. I think someone had mentioned earlier, and this is something I figure I'll go back, but I'm not sure if it's something available as far as there was some type of stormwater runoff report, maybe? So I'd be curious about that, because again, it is into my backyard. The other thing I'm just concerned about, talk, going kind of with the bonding, is just doing some research prior to, this same company with Tallgrass and with the architects, they've had problems in the past with their two built, apartment complexes in Olathe with meeting different codes and doing some of the things that legally they were supposed to do, and it wasn't fixed until after they were caught. So this is also a concern of mine with the Department of Justice. So, these are the, I understand, my understanding, at least from this meeting, is that you guys are just doing a recommendation. I don't think it's a, it's a set. You guys make a decision, and we're all gung-ho. But I'm just really hoping that you do really drive back, and you will see all of us on our front yards and all the kids running around, and the frisbees going across the yard, which is usually mine and Ange's. Just so you know, it's probably hers. But we are, we, we want to keep that. We, we want to keep that. That's what we've really all worked very hard for. And we, and, and it was the plan moving forward. There's not a lot of opportunities to have that elsewhere in Gardner unless you start moving out to where we have propane and, and, you know, I just, it's a neighborhood. It's what we want. It's kind of that, that in-between for our country and, and in-town more, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Tyler Adams. I live at 16380 South Moonlight Road. It'd be North Moonlight for Gardner, but I'm in the middle property of the three adjoining properties here that are technically Johnson County. So, as much as I am living in Johnson County, I have a very large investment in Gardner. And I'll tell you, kind of a preface to this, is that I was, we built our house in this property three years ago. We had purchased the land, has a pond, built our home. Basically, it's going to be the home that I'm going to retire in. I'm not that old yet. That was the decision that we made, is this is the house we're going to move in. We've invested in Gardner. Now, I can tell you that looking out my front window, I can see the sunrise over the horizon. Out my back, I can see the sunset out the back. Now, when we were purchasing our property and planning on building our house, one of the major things that we had was what was going to be developed in the property, basically the field behind our house. At the time, our real, realtors and everybody that we had talked to, including zoning, was that this was going to be at most duplexes or single-family homes, one-story, maybe two-story, was kind of the estimate, but it was going to be low-profile essentially. And that was part of our decision-making and why we chose that property so close to Gardner, rather than going outside of Gardner completely into Johnson County. So, when I hear this, where we've got 220 units were zoned, and now we're tripling that, that does concern me. We're talking about much larger scale. Now, I'm not too concerned about how many units. Now, from a view standpoint, yeah, it's going to be tall. There's other things that I'm thinking about in this. At night, it's dark. We get a little bit of light from like the Cary Building over there in New Century. It's dark. What about light pollution? We're talking about plugging in a significant amount of traffic, a lot of roads, a lot of lighting. This is one of the concerns, not necessarily just for my property, but as people driving by, they're going to see this. This is going to be a fairly significant development that appears. Some thought, food for thought, I guess. At University Drive in Prairie Village, those are our crosses to Moonlight. I'm very familiar with this. Now, I lived in Parma Way prior to moving to this house, and I lived here before Moonlight had been split up. It was still that super narrow two-lane. And I know how horribly congested it was as it developed out north, and that road was tiny. Now, just north of this, we're back to that tiny two-lane. So, what is this traffic going to do? I have seen since moving in in the three years, the traffic has increased. I can tell you that it has. Forecasting is something that you guys are going to have to do. You have to think about, what is this going to be in 10 years? How much is this going to contribute to traffic in that area? And do you guys know? Is this something you guys are going to work on? Is this Johnson County? Is the county going to work with you on these roads? That's a huge hurdle that you guys are going to have to come across. So, something to keep in mind. That road is congested now. It's going to get crazy. Now, and kind of my last point that I wanted to put is, I do want to know the addresses of the two other existing properties that the developers are using. These are going to be great reference points, and I don't know if you guys have actually seen them, but forecasting, 20 years from now, what do those properties look like now? And can we expect 20 years from now, this property to look like that? And is it something that we want? Have you seen it? I want to see it. I want to know. Are we going to have trash? Are we going to have weird fences where things collect? You know, is this going to be an eyesore, or is it going to be something that is positive? You know, I have seen good, well-planned apartment complexes in the Kansas City area. We need to make sure that that's what we're getting. There's some things that are kind of scary in this. 50 feet? It's not that far. It's not even this room. You know? Think about that. So, those are some of the things that I had. Noise, that's the other thing. And this is something that I've seen doing investigations is highly concentrated areas like this are going to become noisy. So your existing residents all around this area and including outside of this area, the developments that you're expecting to come, all of that kind of plays a factor into this. So those are the things I had to say, but thank you.
Hello, my name is Janice Mead. I live at 16400 South Moonlight Road, Olathe. I am one of the adjacent properties within the county. We first moved into the property where Tyler Adams that just spoke lives in 86. So, no, excuse me, we lived there beginning about 76. We have since moved in, it's about 1986, we moved into the property where we live now, the 16400. I would guess our traffic has increased. What we, we'd have traffic probably within 15 to 30 minutes, if even that, equaled our traffic in a week when I moved there. And I, my concern is the same as Tyler's in that strip of, on Moonlight Road. It is a very narrow road and it's, it's getting more difficult and the traffic is really bad. And it's dangerous pulling out of the highways and there's only two lanes and there's no shoulder. We used to have a lot of bicyclists come along there and with the hills and everything. It's dangerous. So I think Johnson County would probably, and New Century must need to coordinate with the city of Gardner in widening that road. But if we have an influx of people in that area residing there, there's definitely a need for widening of Moonlight Road for safety and for movement of traffic. And yes, my husband and I lived there a long time and we worked very hard for our place. And we've enjoyed the quiet atmosphere, close to the city where we had, but yet country. And it's been a wonderful place to raise family and to care for our parents. I also have been concerned and I, there's pros and cons or disagreement in the value of property. But it concerns me at our age, eventually we'll be selling. Will we have, you know, and will we be able to get from what we've put into it at least? And hopefully we could do better. So those are my concerns. And yes, the noise, I've lived in apartments before, some fairly nice and some not so nice at times where my cat's tail was lost and a lot of yelling and, and trying to sleep and waking up three in the morning and the drums beating in the apartment next to us. And things weren't always managed that well, you know? And those were fairly nice since in California. So anyway, those are some of my concerns and I appreciate your efforts in making wise decisions.
My name is Pete Opperman. I live at 18990 West 117th in Olathe. I am the land planner and landscape architect for this project. And I wasn't planning on getting up and saying anything tonight, but I felt like I have to after all the comments that have been made. There's just some things I want to point out. You know, people are talking about tall buildings. There's four buildings in this project that are three stories, but that's only in the middle of the building, not all the way across the length of the building. And all four of those buildings are in the middle of the project and they're intentionally put in the middle of the project because we, that's where we thought they would be best to, you know, not have people say the buildings were too tall out around the perimeter. All the other buildings are two-story buildings. And I heard somebody mentioned that, you know, the back of the building is being lapsed siding. That's not true. These are four-sided buildings, which means each side of the building is basically made out of the same materials. There'll be stucco, brick, stone, nice changes in the roof lines. So anyway, they'll be nice looking buildings. And I would tell you, well, I will tell you, you know, go see Mr. Blakely's other projects. One's called Homestead, another is called Windcroft in, in Olathe, basically in the 119th and Strang Line area, actually west of Black Bob. Excuse me, east of Black Bob, east of all the shopping center and restaurants there. And they have been there for many, many years and the Blakelys do take care of their properties and have, you know, nice residents in them. Also, it was mentioned that you can get a report to say anything. Well, as a professional, and this goes for traffic engineers, engineers, anybody that's a professional that puts their stamp on their work, they don't make a report say what the person saying, paying them wants them to say. They make that report say what the facts say and what the past statistics are. And as Todd Blakely mentioned, the statistics are, and the police department, you know, agreed with him on this, the fire department agreed with him. It doesn't raise crime when you have apartments. What it does is it creates a more diverse community and keeps property values up in general for the whole community when you have diversity in housing. It was also mentioned that or, you know, the, these three buildings backing up to the single family to the north. I mean, these are going to be three nice looking buildings that are all two stories, not three stories. I guarantee you that the backs of these buildings will look better than any homes sit, the back of any homes already sitting there because they're going to be made out of better materials. Single family homes are always woodsman siding on the back of the building. That's basically what it is. That's not what this is going to be. That 50 feet is allowing us to have the room to put a nice curvy public trail back there with lots of landscaping, evergreens and trees to help doing the screening. If it was duplexes back there, you would have absolutely no control over the landscaping. Well, there would be no landscaping because the people that buy those units don't have to do anything, whereas this developer will be doing that. So anyway, and if they were duplexes, that backyard setback could be as low as like 25 foot. We don't have to have 50 foot. We made it 50 foot in order to have that room, the path, all the extra trees. And as a matter of fact, it's also a 50 foot setback all along the west property line, which is not ever even brought up. And I guess in finalizing what I'm seeing is I guess, you know, you guys probably think that all of your staff are professional. They know what the heck they're doing. Look at their staff recommendations. All of their staff recommendations talk about this, creating a more diverse community that fits into the community, provides all this public open space. I mean, if you look at that color rendering and all the green, the dark green is all native grass stuff and the lighter green is all open space. All the gold spots are all civic uses for the use of the community. If this was the previous development that was proposed here, none of that stuff would be there. There would be lots more buildings and not for the use of other members of the community. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Anthony Koberler. I'm at 28313 West 162nd Street. I actually haven't moved in yet. My lot is number 62, right on that, you know, the far left one. That building is going to butt up right next to my house. I have a big, real big window on the backside of my house. So every time I get to walk up my stairs at night, that's the building I'm going to get to stare at. And we've got a lot of people tonight. There's a lot of passion in the room. There's a lot of energy. There's a lot of just everything going on and I can't, I can repeat everything that everybody said tonight, but really what it comes down to this is this plan is basically going to butt up a bunch of apartments to a bunch of single family housing. What part of this city or any city have you been to where that makes sense? And that's the question. And no one's asking for there not to be apartments or mixed family homes or anything like that. What we're asking for is a better plan than this. Let's put some real thought into this and, and I appreciate that there's, you know, if this was my plan, I'd be defending it too. And I completely get that. But you're moving into a neighborhood. You're moving into an area where there's already establishment and things there. I would think that I would want to work with that community to make sure that everybody's happy. And so what I ask tonight is not necessarily to, I'm not, I'm not trying to veto this plan or get rid of this plan or anything like that. What I'm asking for is time and let's develop this in a way that's smart for everybody. Because right now, when I read that plan, the only thing that sounds good in that plan is what's good for that developer, not for the family or the surrounding party or even what's necessarily best for Gardner. Thank you very much for your time.
Hi, I'm Barbara Flannery. I live at 16204 South Canton Street. And I have a question for the developer about the traffic study. Did it take into consideration all of the lots that are planned for Copper Springs, the additional phases and all of that traffic that would be generated from those lots being developed as well? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sean Lotman. I am in the process of building a house, actually two houses down from Anthony who just spoke. And we've been watching the progress of it pretty closely. It's about halfway done. It's framed up and it's got a roof. And, and we've enjoyed going out and seeing the progress of our house every day. It's really exciting. And, and so now, now I have to think about looking at my backyard and seeing a two or three story building, which isn't what we really wanted to sign up for. In fact, if I'd known this was happening, I would have never chosen this lot as, as I'm sure everybody else is the same way. You know, one thing about Gardner is I moved here like 21 years ago, based on the recommendation of a friend, and he's talked about how the housing's cheaper. And Gardner's always been kind of the gem of Johnson County, in my opinion. You probably all agree too, you all came out here just like I did. And the reason for that was the cheap housing. Nobody's going to look and go and talk about Gardner and how many apartment complexes they have. They're going to look at the housing and the nice houses you can get for your money, which is why people move out here, not for apartment complexes. I think this needs to be changed or done away with. Thank you.
It's been a lot of conversation and I'll try, I tried to wade through the commentary to come up with answers for all the questions. This is not Section 8. This is a market rate community. If these apartments were available today, the one veterans would start at 860,000 to $900 a month, 860 to $900 a month. And our two bedroom apartments would be around $1,100 a month. If this community is approved, by the time it is built, they'll probably be more expensive than that. It's not Section 8. It's market rent. The inside of the apartments, granite countertops, hardwood cabinets, engineered flooring, nine-foot ceilings with crown mold, the same kind of finishes you find in single family homes next to us. It'll be probably a three-year project if all goes as planned. We will only attempt to do one phase at a time, get those units absorbed. If they do it the way we hope, we'll move into the next phase. There's no issue with bonding. We have the financial strength to build this project, see it to fruition, but we are going to phase the project if we're allowed to do so. Two-story buildings, we hear a lot of commentary about people don't want to look out on two-story buildings. That's exactly what you'd get with a single family or with a number of different town home plans. In fact, our two-story buildings will not be as tall as a two-four, two-story, single family home built on a, on a foundation. We build our buildings off of slabs, 412 pitch roofs. They'll be lower than our neighboring buildings. The two communities that I think we've been asked to identify for you all is the Windcroft Hill Apartments, 12235 South Black Bob and the Homestead Apartments at 119th and Shannon. They're both very close to one another, approximately at the intersection of I-35 and 119th Street, just a little bit east of that. Our architecture is modern farmhouse. We've not taken that all the way yet. We've engaged an architect, BCS Design Jeff Schenkel. I believe he's already doing some work here in Gardner on a church. Top-notch architect. We've not perfected those plans yet, but that is the theme we'd like to carry forward with. As far as the traffic engineering report, the level of service and the criteria used in that report is determined by the engineers. We don't have anything to do with that. And there's not one standard for Gardner, I don't believe, one standard for Olathe or Overland Park. There are engineering standards that need to be met. And to qualify that, you could talk with Michelle or some of the other staff members. Again, we don't know Amy McCurdy, had never met her before. She was recommended to us because she had done work in Gardner before, and I think she's totally professional, excuse me, and would defend her, her findings. The tax benefit to the city, property tax advisory group estimated that if the project were built in its completion today, would throw off approximately $830,000 a year in taxes. The benefit to the city of Gardner above and beyond what single family or any other kind of housing type that has a lot of kids in there is that with few kids here, you're paying, you're not paying for that burden of schools. Those are extremely expensive and they're a huge drain on a community. 830,000 for very few children. I think the payout for the city, you're going to end up with more money with an apartment community. We would have been more than happy to meet with our neighbors. In fact, we've talked with the city staff multiple times and said, we're ready. We'd like to meet with the neighbors. We were advised that unless they had a lot of feedback, a lot of negative comments from the neighbors, there was no need to meet. Obviously, it has changed. We reached out to Phil. We wanted to meet with Phil, talk about our plan. He didn't want to meet with us. So go figure. And I've got the emails that say that unless we're going to do duplexes, there's no reason for us to meet. So there was someone who came up, made the commentary about our apartment communities that ran into trouble. Our apartment communities were approved by HUD, but the DOJ came in and said, you've missed some accessibility aspects with sidewalks. We had to add sidewalks. That was the end of the issue with HUD. We do what we say we're going to do. We build good products. And I would compare this plan with a plan that's already been approved. And I think our landscape architect mentioned it, there is a tremendous amount more green space in this plan to be enjoyed by the community than you would find in any other plan, single family or lower density multifamily. It's just, just look at the plan and you'll see. The reason we take the buildings up is to provide more green space. The previous plan is a sea of rooftops, driveways and patios. And I think it was also mentioned, if you had single family or town homes on the north abutting the Copper Springs development, they could be within 25 feet of the property line. So 50 feet's not enough. 25 feet's a lot less. Also with kids, you get the swing sets, you get the playgrounds, you get the little waiting pools, the trampolines, the pergolas, the in-ground, all kinds of different stuff. You don't have that here. Our lease agreement with our residents prevents those things from happening. We are actually going to be a quieter neighbor than you would see with single family up to your house. And that's, we know that from experience. As far as moving in and out of the property, we have two trash collection points. They are compactors. It saves the economy, it saves economically with the pickup. It also saves with the environment. And with those two, it saves on the wear and tear on public and private streets. It's an extremely efficient way to pick up trash. We have two mail kiosks. We don't deliver door to door. The post office delivers to two locations to accommodate the entire project. Same benefit to the community that way. Community?
Yes, as in your community or the community?
This is really a community within the community council. I can't think. I, I, hopefully I answered most of the questions that were brought up. If I didn't, I'll sit back down again if you want to hear other questions, but hopefully that addressed most of the issues that you, you had. So thank you.
I guess I got a little bit rebuttal time. Todd, I didn't meet you because you didn't budge one inch on this. You said, this is the way it's going to be. Here it is. Here's our plan. Here's our luxurious $800 a month apartments that have lap siding. The picture shows lap siding. And I've been in building 40 years. I know what lap siding looks like. So I don't know where, what you're talking about there, but that is not luxurious to me. That's why I didn't want to meet. You still, you, you may change the buildings around, but guess what? We've still got 220 versus almost 600. Remember that. So all your green space, you can take the extra 750 people that are going to live there and put them outside on the green space and you might have enough space for them. But I don't know how many square inches each person's going to get on that green space, but that's a lot of people. but that's a lot of people. So, Todd, you know why we didn't meet, because the staff was already through, didn't contact me whatsoever, and they got right through it, and I'm here to tell you, don't just say yes, don't say, just say no. Go out there. If I could ask the council, how many people actually drove out there before we met tonight? I'd, I'd like a vote if, or at least a raise of hands if people actually went out there and looked at it before you vote yes or no. Then you know what we mean.
Okay. Are there any further questions or comments? We probably need to look at closing the public hearing. Okay.
Brian Keating, 28605, West 162nd Place. I wasn't referring to, are you gonna do Section 8 to begin with? I know that's not the case. My concern is law enforcement, I've seen it before, is if you don't fill right away, are you going to accept Section 8? That was my question on that. Second thing was, I think what we're trying to say for you all is, put yourselves in our shoes. Imagine building your house, your dream house, your forever house. That's what we've done. I'm in law enforcement. I don't make a lot of money. I think some of you up here know how much we actually make. This is the place we moved to. We already moved from one, one side of the town to this side of town to get away from the traffic down by the intermodal. So this is where we put all of our bang for our buck. This is not what we moved here for. So please put yourselves in our shoes, imagine living where we are, and would you be willing to take this on like we are? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for everybody that spoke. I think we are ready to close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Okay. Motion to close the public hearing made by Commissioner Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Gardner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, nay. Motion carries seven to zero. Okay. So this is, we've already had, Michelle, we had the application on application on 1B2, same guy, right? Or do we need 1B also?
No, you can go ahead and finish on A.
Okay. Okay. So this is time for planning commission discussion. Anyone have any comments, questions, or would like to discuss any items? And I will start with Commissioner McKeon.
I have a few, but I'm gonna, I'd like the operator to come back, and so I'm gonna pass.
Okay.
I'm gonna do the same.
Okay.
Well, there's a lot here, and I do thank everybody. I got everybody's names that spoke and each of your concerns. This'll be, I've been on here for a year and a half. This'll be the third large meeting that we've had, and they've all been around multi-housing. As been, as been stated, we allowed Waverly Point, and then we also turned down zoning for another area in Gardner. And I will tell you that some of the concerns that I had with the area that we turned down are also some of the concerns I have here. I personally, and I stated this, have an issue with multi-story next to R1, that'd be single-family. That section at the top of the screen is, is an area that I do have some concern. I do appreciate the fact that it was put down to, two-story, and there are plenty of single-family that are two-story, so I understand that, but they're also larger than a single-family. The, going back, I got so many things down here. Traffic will be increased on 167th and Moonlight, there's no doubt about that. I moved to Gardner in 1998, and I moved to that area. My house butted up next to a field, which is now Genesis Creek Estates. I moved the whole block into Genesis Creek Estates. 167th Street was a dirt road, a gravel road, and Moonlight was a single, a two-lane, as was stated before. So I understand the impact of a lot of other stuff being built, but I also understand that the city has adjusted throughout the years also to that. That's why Moonlight's four lanes. 167th's paved. I have no doubt that with this type of multi-housing going in, that they would definitely have to look at 167th going from a county-type road to a city-type road, and most likely will have to look at signaling, because even now, it's with Copper Springs growing, which was a development that I looked at, Phase 1. With the Copper Springs growing, getting on 167th Street and Moonlight has gotten harder, and it's only gonna get harder with more multi-housing. A lot of people talk about studies. The city does a study and provides us with, they're the experts on this, we're community members that volunteer for the job, and, and we rely upon the city to give us their recommendations on, and what's appropriate when it comes to traffic utilities and so forth, and they've advised that everything's fine on that. When I found out the apartment complexes, because we do not know those, the public has access to the packet online, at the same time we have access to the packet, and you see the exact same information that we see. We're up here making a determination and listening to each of you, but we have the same information. I got on my phone and looked up those websites to look at the, the ratings on those two places and how those, the pictures and so forth. The pricing is right in line with what the developer said for those apartments, that he says for these apartments. They get good ratings. Another quandary that we have, and I'm kinda all over the place, I know, but one of the quandary that we have here is that urban development is a thing. There's plenty of studies showing that urban is the way things are going. That's why we've had the meetings that we've had, is because there's a lot more multi-housing going up. Your generation is not looking for suburbia, and of course, it's an issue for suburbia because we moved to suburbia because we wanted to be there, right? But it is not, it's not as much of a thing anymore, and, and that's something that we have to deal with here. What else? I think it was Brian, you talked about public safety and so forth. I agree, a lot of it goes down to the management of the property, and that's somewhat of an unknown to us. If you have good management, you'll have good apartment complexes. If you have poor management, you will have public safety issues, and that one will be a hard one for us to determine, or at least myself, and I'm in that field too, by the So, there's just a lot of things. Those are the, kinda my thoughts on, on what's here now, and so I'll leave it at that for the moment.
Okay. Commissioner Simmonsley.
I do have a couple of questions for staff that I just want to be very clear on before I make any kind of decision. The traffic study that was mentioned was done by the developer, correct?
That is correct, and they are always required to submit a traffic study from a licensed engineer, and they are always based on industry standards. So there is what they call a green book, which has your standard traffic, that's where I'm looking for, traffic impacts depending on the use, and they base it all on industry standards and such, and it, their, their stamp is just like the stamp of a civil engineer, of an architect. It is their license on the line. And then we have on-staff traffic engineers that review that and, and make comments back and forth. We have on-call consultants for both the traffic engineer review, traffic study review, and our stormwater study reviews.
That was just my question, what kind of back-and-forth review does the city have to do on that? And at what point would we have our own study from the city of Gardner for the, that area?
We wouldn't typically do our own study. We do our own studies for our future traffic plans, but we, we require these traffic studies for each type of development, and we build off of those.
Okay. Thank you. My next question was, can you clarify item number five? Doesn't have a page number. Where's it at? The length of time the subject property has remained vacant as zone, there's a comment under this, no, actually, it's number six, I'm sorry. The relative gain to economic development, there's a comment in the staff comments that said the current restrictions could impose a hardship to the applicant as they would be required to meet the current development plan. That was not their plan or interest to build. Can you clarify that? Is that the 220 that we've been referring to that was previously approved? Do they have to build exactly to that, or just that number, or?
The previous zoning had the previous plan attached to it, which was this, that, the way the plan development works is that that preliminary plan becomes the zoning standards for that district. So you either have to build what is approved, or with minor tweaks, or you have to go through the public hearing process again.
Okay. Okay, and then my last question for staff, just to clarify. If the rezone is not approved, the multifamily housing could still be built, but just not to this density. It would have to be a lower density, correct?
If, if the council does not approve this rezoning, this still remains.
Okay. That was all the questions I had. Thanks.
Hey, Commissioner Gardner.
So, I just wanted to, thank you everyone for coming out tonight and giving your testimony, opinions, and questions and comments. I have some questions for staff. The first question is, what was, what we approved last time? Were they two-story duplexes or single-story duplexes?
I think they were a mix. It kinda depended on where they were located, but typically, you're going to get two-story.
So then, I, I failed to understand where the three buildings were that were three stories. Can someone point that out to me? Or four buildings were that are three stories? How do you do that?
They're the ones labeled on the plan that says three ST.
This is one. Here's one. Wondering if we, oh, here's one, and here's one. There's these two, and these two. All the rest of them are two. And that, it's just the middle part of that building that's three-story, is a stair step from two to three on both sides.
So, another comment that I have, I guess, is in regards to, there was a question of Section 8 housing. Actually, this is a question for staff. Have we had an issue filling any apartment complexes in Gardner?
You want to clarify that for me? What do you mean by issues? I mean, every, every construction has problems while it's under construction either way.
No, no, I meant, filling them with tenants.
No, currently, all the current apartment units in town are running full, or if they have vacancies, are filled fairly quickly. I know that the two newest ones, Horizon Trails and the Nottingham Apartments at the southwest part of town, are both full and have waiting lists. Moonlight, residents of Moonlight also has a waiting list currently. Those are the, the three large existing apartment complexes in town.
And about how many doors was that total? I mean, not exact.
Horizon says 168, Nottingham is 76, and Moonlight is 400 and, it's over 400, I'm sorry.
So, I, I wanted to address some of the concerns that the public has, and they're always the same concerns because of, you know, apartment complexes and what they, what they have to offer. And one of the issues that is always brought up is traffic, and, you know, traffic studies are done. You can, I suppose, shop around to professionals to try and get what you want. I don't know which, which one they use for the traffic study, but I do know that Valbridge, I cannot get Valbridge to give me a report. I'm in commercial real estate. I can't get them to give me a report that says what I want, and so I, if they have figured out how to do that, I'd be more than happy to, to listen to it. I have concerns that we are butting up apartment complexes next to single-family homes. That's kind of almost where I drew the line in my head, which is why last time I approved the duplexes, because it transitioned from duplexes, you know, to more density towards the middle. I'm torn because we have our staff report, which indicates that they have met code, but I personally don't know if, if I'm willing to set the precedent that we can allow an apartment complex right next to a single-family home. So I, to be honest, I'm still undecided, so I don't know what else to say.
Okay. Commissioner Mayor.
Sure. Thank you guys very much for showing up tonight. It really makes volunteering for this worthwhile, to know that there's public input. Folks want to come out and speak very passionately on an item, that, that makes it worthwhile, at least for me and from my, my perspective. I think so far, all of the questions I have were answered to date. I know there was one item, as I member of the public regarding use of the public space within the Tall Grass apartment area, and I think that was answered as a yes, as an affirmative? No.
It's their community.
Could, could the, is, is the applicant still here? And I guess, can you just clarify that for me, just to, it's just for the residents of Tall Grass? Please, yes. That would be great. Thank you.
The walking trail and the civic rec space is available to the community.
Okay.
Now, obviously, the sports court, some of the other amenities that you literally pay for with your rent are limited to those who live in the community.
Okay. Thank you. That, thank you for the clarification. And I guess, just, just to throw in my, my perspective, I, I did drive through the area several times, actually. I also drove through the areas of the currently-owned apartment complexes. They're nice. I think something like this is needed in Gardner. We just heard that we have at-capacity or waiting lists for apartments. Apartments aren't a bad thing. This is a good price point for the apartments. From my perspective, and to just kinda keep things moving along, Madam Chair, I, I'm leaning towards, you know, if we need to continue this, to have those conversations, it sounds like maybe there, there hasn't been some Q&amp;A sessions between the homeowners and the developer of this project. Perhaps that might be a, a good option to, to think about, and that's kind of my, my position at this time, so just to keep things moving forward, and thanks for letting me come on that.
Thank you.
So. I'd like to, thank you. First of all, I wanted to thank everybody for coming out tonight and having a very thorough and lively discussion. I just had a couple of questions that came up as I was listening to everything. With regard to landscaping, and it's for staff and even the developer, maybe I missed this, I just come back from being out of town for a week. I didn't see a landscaping plan like we saw at Waverly Point or Waverly, the Waverly Development, and I just wanted to kinda get an idea of what was being planned for landscaping and buffering between this development and the... and buffering between this development and the, and Copper Springs to the north.
The landscaping plan comes at the final development plan phase. And what you will see, I can't tell you the details, but at a minimum, between the different zoning districts, you're going to see a minimum of eight-foot-wide buffer yard. And then there's certain numbers of trees, evergreens and shrubs that are required within that buffer yard.
Okay, because I wanted to come back to, I, I, go ahead.
This, this was just, was not required, but we just, this is given as a suggestion.
Understand. Well, I guess, another question, just a follow-up to staff on this same subject. One of the things that, in just the last meeting, when we had Waverly here on the final approval, they had done a tremendous job of addressing concerns of buffering with the landscape plan and extensive landscaping. I had asked that we try to see if we can encourage those, that level of buffering in, in establishing that as a, as a jump-off point between the locations. That's a comment. And I wasn't on the commission when, when the current zoning was approved. Do we know when that was? How long ago that was?
It was in early 2018.
Okay. So most of the residents here at least knew that there'd be a, a two or 300 unit in, to the south of them when they, when they built their homes? Or the potential for that?
There has been a plan for development for this area since 2003.
And my last question is, is just with being able to address the market. You know, with Waverly being built and with this coming, you know, Tallgrass coming in, unless I miscalculated, that's somewhere in the neighborhood of around 700, 800 units, or capacity of units that's going to be built between those two developments. Is that, is that fairly close?
Fairly close. The timeframe for the actual construction, not all of these are built at the same time. So you're looking at a three-year span according to the applicant for this. But in Waverly Point, you were looking at those 144 units to be built pretty much all continuously at one time. So once they started, they would build that one completely out.
And I guess a follow-up question, Larry, and staff, are we fairly comfortable and confident that, that the community can absorb that amount of building and development?
That's a pretty much a market question. At this point in time, the Johnson County multi-listing takes into account the countywide, they're building, and I'm going to misquote myself, but they're building approximately 2,000 apartment units a year annually in Johnson County. And the absorption rate for that right now is still over 3,000 units. So the demand for apartments is about a third higher than what's being logistically built per year. Those figures fluctuate monthly, but that's what the last annual report that I read indicated.
Okay, and I just had a couple of just personal perspective comments I wanted to make. I understand that a lot of the market is driving to multifamily in, in higher density as we have more and more people. And I also am fairly impressed that the $800, $1,200 rents or slightly more by the time this is built is, is going to lead to people joining our community potentially and liking this area and being in a position where they can buy into this community and single-family at some point down the road. So thanks for answering the questions. I don't have anything more at this point.
Okay. Commissioner Ford.
The 2018 approval plan for this property before, why hasn't it got to fruition? Why are we looking at a new thing just a year after the last one was approved?
I have been told that the previous property owner has been given an offer to, well, the, the developer has given the current property owner an offer that he likes.
Any additional questions?
No, that was, that was my only one that I had.
Okay. I don't, well, I do have a couple. I think somebody in the audience asked about stormwater, and I don't know if we addressed that. I mean, I know you talked about it in the plan, but I don't think we addressed it enough that they asked.
Right. If you look on your screen, there's a stormwater detention area rate on the west side, and then these little dotted areas that go to that stormwater area. Those are collection kind of streams to the stormwater areas. Additionally, there is a stormwater area here and a stormwater area here. And our stormwater on-call consultant has accepted the stormwater plan that the applicant has provided and has stated that it is satisfactory for maintenance of the stormwater on the site.
Okay. And then also somebody mentioned light pollution. I don't know if we addressed that or if anybody has any input from staff or.
Lighting comes in with the final development plan. Our code does have standards for downward directional lighting. No, no flowing of light onto adjacent property. The applicants will provide photometric plans that show that. They have to do shieldings based on the lighting, wattage. We get all those details at the final development plan. And of course, there's the city requirements for streetlights.
Okay, and then one last question. I think that, that we, we may or may not have control over, because it's not in the city limits of Gardner, but people were asking about the future. If there, have we been, as a city, involved in any future needs of moonlight? Or have we heard of anything that, of the area not in Gardner?
The future growth of the city is to the north along Moonlight, one of the future growth areas that we have. And in our, in our long-term CIP plan for the city, we do have plans to look at the expansion of Moonlight Road, at least to 159th is the next stopping point, with the inclusion of the improvement of that particular intersection, because it's on a little bit of a hill. And so that roadway actually, when it is improved, will require some major grade improvements to both bring the low spots up and the high spots down, so that the safety sightlines along the intersections are approved. But that's futuristic. It's within, it's supposed to be within the next 10 to 15 years. It's on a variable sliding scale. And along with that same token, there was mention of the street on the west end of town, and I don't know if they were talking about Santa Fe, which traditionally has had a high rate of flooding. That street actually goes to bid for improvement this fall to become a three-lane arterial corridor of 175th or Santa Fe Street, as it exits 56th to the west and goes out towards St. John's Trace.
I, I don't have any additional questions. I do want to thank everybody for coming. This is why I get involved as well. I like the interaction of people. I think it's great that you've come and spoken and given comments and questions. I think that's very valuable to this whole process. So, thanks.
Madam Chair. I did just have two comments, one, which is particularly appropriate before you take action. The first comment is, I wanted to respond to the inquiry about whether bonding would be required on the project. I think the developer responded to the bonding requirements in terms of their personal vertical construction. He said they, you know, had financial backing and it's not required by city code that they bond, you know, their actual physical construction in terms of buildings. However, in terms of public infrastructure that they're required to build, they are required to post bonds to ensure appropriate construction of, of all of those things. And that includes streets, sewers, drainage, grading plans, all that stuff. So they have to, to post, that's, they have to post appropriate both performance bonds and maintenance bonds. So they have to ensure 100% cost of construction of all of those items. And then on top of that, the maintenance bond requires for a period usually of two years, that the improvements that are constructed, are constructed to the appropriate standard and that they come back and perform any remedial, any remedial type work that might be, that might be unnecessary. So that's one point. The second, and this is kind of a global point, is throughout the evening tonight, there have been a lot of comments about a lot of issues. And I wanted to make sure that this body, before they take action, is appropriately focused on your job and your function pursuant to Kansas law and under our code. And I know that many of you who have been on this planning commission for a long time are very well familiar with that, but I want to remind you of that and remind you that your action is supposed to be based off of the 10 factors that staff has laid out in the staff report. Those 10 factors are taken from, from Kansas case law. And those are the factors on a rezoning decision that are appropriate for consideration. To the extent that there are issues that have been brought up in the public hearing portion tonight that don't directly reflect on one of those 10 factors, it is not appropriate for, for you in your consideration in terms of the action tonight. So if there are any questions on those two points, I'd be happy to take those.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have any questions for the city attorney?
Okay. Is there any further discussion from the Commissioners? Is there anything staff would like to add? Okay. I don't know, are we ready for a motion or?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. That after review of application Z-19-03 and PDP-19-03, rezoning preliminary development plan for parcel IDs CP945000000 space 0T0C and CP94500000 space 0T0D. And preliminary development plan dated July 1, 2019, and staff report dated July 23, 2019, the planning commission approves the application as proposed, provided the following conditions are met, items one through six, and recommends the planning commission forward the recommendation for approval to the governing body.
Do we need to read the conditions?
You can do it as.
Okay. I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Mater and a second by Commissioner McNair to, for the suggested motion for item number one A. Any discussion on the motion?
I, I just want to say that we have the 10 standards that we have to follow. This is actually one I don't want to vote for, but we have certain standards that we have to follow. And these, these 10 questions that we have to answer for rezoning come into effect, and the staff has recommended that we approve this motion. So it's with a heavy heart I'm going to approve.
I, I'd like to make a comment here. I mean, with the lane that we are given to, to drive in, it appears at this point that the 10 conditions or 10 items have been met. And, you know, with the, with the guidance that we have to operate in, I have to concur with Commissioner Gardner, I'm going to vote to approve.
Okay. So again, the motion was made by Commissioner Mater, seconded by Commissioner McNair. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
None.
Motion carries six to zero.
Six to one.
Oh, sorry. Six to one.
I, I was going to abstain.
Okay. So I will amend the results. Motion carries five to one with one exception. So I guess we're ready for item number one B. The, and it is PP-19-05, consider a preliminary plat for 43-acre, five-lot, multifamily residential subdivision.
Carrying on with the preliminary plat for the Tallgrass project. Staff finding for the plat, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan regarding a variety of housing types for the area, connectivity, both street and trail, and open space described in the new residential growth area section. It's consistent with the land development code with meeting the exception for the block sizes. There, there are requirements for maximum block sizes in the land development code. The exception that I'm talking about here offers an exception for larger block sizes because of different types of development, large-scale, large projects and such. Staff finds that it meets the exception. Phasing meets logical coordinated approach. The phasing works from southeast to west and then to east again. A lot of that is based on sewer availability. There is a ridge that kind of runs along where Gretna runs. And there's a little more work with sewer in that eastern area, so working that direction is, is very logical and coordinated. Utilities and facilities are provided, the exception of the final design of the sewer. I discussed that prior, and there's the description in, in the staff report regarding sewer. And since the property is entirely within the Gardner service area, the utilities department has asked that they provide a plan where the entire property is sewed to Gardner facilities, whether that means providing a lift station or topography changes or such. The project does not impede future infrastructure improvements for the area. The, the project is dedicating the necessary, necessary amount of right-of-way for the expansion of Moonlight Road in the future, and then providing the expansion of Gretna to the north and then Evergreen. And of course, university is already in place. Those smaller streets, the extension of Gretna and Evergreen Street are developed at the developer's cost. Staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plat for Tallgrass with the following conditions. Rezoning 1903 and preliminary development plan, PDP 1903 for Tallgrass are approved by the governing body. Revised plan to the satisfaction of the utilities department to show all sanitary sewer lines flow to Gardner facilities, including a lift station if necessary. That's the same condition that was recommended for the rezoning and preliminary development plan.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
No.
Did the applicant have any presentation on this item? Or have we covered everything? No? No? Okay. It's time for planning commission discussion. Does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns?
Haven't been.
Okay. Let's see. I'm sorry, I got distracted.
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Do you think the staff has anything additional to add? Okay. I guess we're ready for a motion. Madam Chair, I make a motion that after.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that after review of application PP-19-05, a preliminary plat for Tallgrass located at the northwest corner of Moonlight Road and University Drive, parcel IDs CP94500000 space 0T0C and CP94500000 space 0T0D and preliminary plat dated July 1, 2019, and staff report dated July 23, 2019, the planning commission approves the application as proposed, provided conditions 1 and 2 are met.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mater and a second by Commissioner Bowden for item 1A, PP-1905, as stated. Any discussions of the motion? Oh, I apologize, of 1B. Any discussions for 1B? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions?
I forgot to say aye, but I was an aye.
So motion carries 7 to 0.
6 to 1.
6 to 1. Oh gosh, I am so sorry. I will amend. Motion carries 6 to 1. Okay, we are ready for our next item number.
Chairman Roberts, can we take a break for about five minutes?
Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, we will take a five-minute break and then return.
Yes.
Do we need a motion?
I'll make a adjournment for five minutes.
No, 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 no.
I didn't entertain a motion for a five-minute break.
Madam Chair.
Seconded.
Okay. Commissioner McNair made the motion for a five-minute break, seconded by Commissioner Gardner. All in favor?
Aye.
All those, motion carries.
We're holding on.
We are back to restart the meeting of July 23, planning commission, and Michelle is going to present our next item, which I don't have all. But she'll be ready.
Item 2 is election of officers. I'm just going to give you a brief overview of this memo. We've kind of been holding off with election of officers since we knew that we were going to be getting a few new planning commissioners. So what we would ask for you guys to do tonight is to nominate and vote for a chair and vice chair. And you can see in here, this is excerpt from the bylaws of the planning commission as to what the different officers' responsibilities and duties are. The chair and the vice chair. The chair runs the meeting. We do provide basically a script for you guys to follow. We don't leave you hanging out there. So we do, you know, provide training if you need to meet ahead of the meetings to get some guidance on things. We do meetings before the meetings. Just like Chairman Roberts and staff met prior to the meeting just for some reminders, ex parte communication is very important, that we had gotten some additional public comments in, and, you know, just some reminders of that, some questions. We really try to help the chair and vice chair along with that. You guys are the leaders of the commission. The vice chair will step in when the chair is absent. And then the secretary, which is technically the city administrator, who has designated Larry, who I put his name on stuff and send it out. He's also supposed to be taking the minutes, which Christie does, so we all do a little bit of the secretary job. But, so staff recommends that you nominate and vote on the election of the chair and the vice chair for the 2019, 2020 time period.
Okay, any questions? Okay, I entertain a motion.
I'd like to put a motion forward to nominate Commissioner Bowden for chairman.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner McNair and seconded by Commissioner Mater for Commissioner Bowden to be the chair of the planning commission. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I was going to say, I wholeheartedly agree.
Any, I guess we're ready. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions. So we.
Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Motion passes 6 to 0 with one abstention. Okay, we are ready for a motion for.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for vice chairman. I'd like to nominate Tori Roberts as vice chairman of the Gardner Planning Commission.
Second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Mater and seconded by Commissioner Gardner for Tori Roberts to be the vice chairman on the planning commission. Any discussion? Hopefully he'll be here every time.
He's had good attendance, he has had good attendance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I guess I should have said. Okay, so motion passes 6 to 0 with one abstention. Okay, any other items for the planning commission from staff or?
You do have discussion items. How much time do they have to extend?
You've got a 15-minute timeframe. It's really up to them as to how they want to approach this. I mean, I know you all have kind of a mandatory stop at 10 o'clock, and you can vote to extend it. Generally, the training elements that I would be going over with you tonight, by the way, I'm Dave Knopchik, I'm a consulting planner with the City of Gardner, working for the City of Gardner. You would, essentially, this would be about a 60-minute timeframe if we were to do this in its fullest. We can break it up, we can wait and defer, we can talk about some things that I observed from tonight and maybe discuss if you had questions coming into this a little bit. So there's a number of different ways I can work this. I can do one or two brief sections at the beginning because the beginning parts are things about accepting your roles and responsibilities. This is really kind of a refresher for those of you who have been on the planning commission for a while, it's some basic elements that I think we want to go over with. I think one of you is brand-new to the commission. Okay? And then somebody's a returner, somebody's coming back, okay? So, yeah, yeah. There's other words for that, but we won't use them, crazy, you know, that kind of thing. But this is intended to kind of be that basic foundational kind of review of some things, just to remind you and then give you the opportunity to interact. So I know the later we get into the night, the less interaction I'm going to get from everybody, and I know that's going to happen because the thinking caps are kind of off, you know, at this point. So I don't mind if you want to extend it for a little bit, or if you want to just get started, we'll get up to 10 o'clock and you can decide, boy, if I'm boring you, we'll move to August and finish up. It's kind of up to you guys.
Madam Chair, could we ask staff what's on the agenda for next month to see if, because I agree, I'd like to have my full attention.
Right. I'm burned, so just so, you know, like I'm burned out.
But I would be interested in if you had some quick feedback right off the top of my head.
I would be very interested in knowing what you saw.
Okay, so we had a couple of questions.
Yeah. Next month, the only item you have is a site plan for QuickTrip.
All right then. Is there severe opposition to QuickTrip? Is there? Is there a growing movement?
Maybe from its competitors.
I'm just wondering, because I mean.
Going in the middle of a neighborhood.
We're just working out details.
Yeah.
Leveling the score to put in a quick trip.
So do we think the consensus is maybe we should do this all at the end of the next meeting?
Right. But I would like feedback.
Yeah, so we have.
I'd like to feedback from everybody.
Have feedback for tonight, and then we, up until 10 o'clock, and we adjourn. And then whatever's left, we'll have the main presentation at the next meeting. Okay.
Okay. I'll watch my clock, and if somebody else has got another clock, be watching yours too, because this phone will go blank on me, and if I don't keep clicking it, I won't know what time it is. Again, Dave Knopchik, I have my own consulting business, I'm an urban planner by training and I guess by experience too, and education. I've worked in the public and private side for over 30 years now, it's been a long time. Currently, I have my own business on the consulting side. I've been both in the private side with Gould Evans for 13 years, and then I've worked for the cities of Wichita, Sedu County in Kansas, as well as Lenexa here in the metropolitan area. So I've been in that level of planning, everything from public nuisance code enforcement up to director of department in the public side. So I've got a lot of experience in interaction with planning commissions, things like that. Real briefly, a couple of things I do want to do. I want to make sure that Ms. Roberts gets some credit for tonight. I knew a little bit that you're kind of filling into the role, you know, but you've done it before, but it is not easy when you're not the designated chairperson and doing it every month. It's not always easy to come into these forums, and I want to make sure that you understand you did a very good job from a perception standpoint, what was out there. It's not easy to manage the meeting, plus be worried about, am I absorbing comments so that I can go ahead and make a vote? And that's a difficulty for all chairpeople. You're going to experience it if you haven't already. It is not easy to manage the meeting, plus go through that. So that is one item I want to make sure of. And then for you all as commissioners, you did a nice job of being patient with your chairperson tonight, which I don't always get with planning commissions. So from the standpoint of your interactions and what were going on, I felt that you did a really good job. I think you sat and listened to a lot of commentary through the public meeting and made sure that you were listening to everybody. And that is a real critical part. When we get into the training a little bit more, we'll talk a little bit about that. A second point that I wanted to make sure I hit on very quickly, I thought that your attorney here who's present, and it's a great asset to have the attorney present at planning commission meetings, many planning commissions do not have that ability to have the city attorney sitting in with them. They rely on the planning staff, but when points of legal argument come up, that gets a little bit hairy, because the planners are not attorneys and the attorneys are not planners, and they bring you different resources. But the attorney did a nice job when he refocused you, because you heard tonight a lot of commentary that really does not fall into your realm of consideration on the issues that you had before you. And I thought he did a nice job of reminding you of that. You have to be very careful with that commentary. There are things really about project financing that you will never know and are not part of your realm. There are things that you're interested in to see if it's a feasible project or not, but you have to be very careful with that. That is really sometimes a city council issue or a staff issue, depending on the policies that the city has. So that's one. I got a little dicey when it starts talking about Section 8 housing versus market rate housing. We have to be very careful when we start getting into the economics of what is this for, and especially in housing. Housing discrimination is a big issue. It's a huge issue. There's a whole series of housing acts and laws in this country that talk about how we need to treat housing fairly at all levels. So you have to be very careful when you're hearing commentary from the public about those kinds of things and what you absorb. And even, I would suggest, when you start asking questions in that realm, you have to be very careful, because applicants and things have attorneys that may be listening to this, being part of it, and they're looking for those things, because if they feel that they have been dealt with in a negative way, they don't have a problem recommending their client, let's challenge the city on this. They made their decision based on this commentary, which is really outside their realm. So you have to be careful on how you interact on those kinds of issues. So it was good to see that refocus, or at least that ability by the city attorney to say, I just want to remind you. The hard part is, and I don't have a way to judge this tonight because I didn't read the staff report before that item, so I'll just be open and honest about that. I read the agenda, I knew what was coming up, I've been in some staff meetings where this item's been discussed, and I've seen the interactions that have gone on there. And there's a lot of thought that goes in there. We have an interesting balance, and when we get into the training a little bit more next month, I'm going to talk about that balance. Those golden criteria that were referred to are very important guidelines for you to follow. But there is also that element of it's okay to disagree with what staff may say about some of those items. But that then comes down to how informed are you about things like the comprehensive plan and the content that's in there? There are sometimes in the comp plan and the various policies that a city has, there's conflicts. They don't always align and perfectly mesh together. And so you having knowledge of other parts of a comp plan that maybe the city staff has not brought up or hasn't looked at is really critical, because as you look to potentially sit there and say, well, what kind of motion do we want to make here? I want to be careful, because the golden criteria are so critical in Kansas, and the ability to follow that and know that you're in a safe position when you make a decision based on those criteria. That is the safest position you can be in when you follow those criteria. And many times when staff is feeding that, you're very, very safe, right? Because you're adopting that logic as your findings of fact. Okay? So you're basically telling staff, we are reaffirming your findings of fact in this criteria. That's a very safe place. But there are times when you might disagree. Like tonight, you may have had the ability to make an argument to say, I disagree with this because of the density change going from those apartments to single-family, and that may very well be within the realm of those criteria. Okay?
Okay, thank you for saying that, because that was my basis for saying nay.
Yeah. So there's some of that that you have to know, but that's through gaining knowledge of the plans and policies that are there, but then also relying on staff. Okay? One of the hardest parts when I was at Lenexa, when I got hired as director there, one of the things that I was told by the mayor was, allow the city council to make decisions. And what he was referring to was the staff would have very solid staff reports, which is very good, I'm not criticizing that. But on the same hand, what the council wanted was the flexibility that if they disagreed with staff, they had findings that could potentially disagree with staff. So we had to adjust the way we wrote staff reports. We had to give them, where we saw some of the conflicts on some of those items, we would give them both sides of the coin. We would still give a recommendation as to what we believed was the best interpretation, but we also gave that element to them. So when you ask questions of staff, you have that ability to say, well, is there something else in the comprehensive plan that might point to this? Or is there something else in one of these criteria that we might look at?
Let me jump in on that point. I mean, from the legal perspective as well, you can't just rely on the staff report, because the public hearing is statutory and is there for a reason. So when you are sitting as this body, you're sitting in what's referred to under Kansas laws as a quasi-judicial capacity. So when you walk into the meeting before the public hearing has occurred, you can't prejudge the application until everybody has had the opportunity to come in and say their piece. Okay? And by me refocusing you on those 10 factors, I wasn't saying you have to accept what staff said. I was just saying, those are the 10 factors, you may have heard something tonight that wasn't in the staff report, because it would be impossible, right? Because we didn't have the public hearing, we didn't walk in here, that could have impacted one of those factors differently than what's in the staff report.
So piggyback on that real quick, the issue was, I didn't see a conflict with what my problem was within those 10 criteria. So my issue is, obviously, I don't like multifamily being against single-family. I don't like it, I hate it. But there was nothing in those 10 criteria, I felt, that could justify me saying no. And so that's why I came to the conclusion with a heavy heart, I don't like it, but I'm going to vote yes, because the 10 criteria that we use, which is the gold standard.
That's exactly the same place.
You can't use your opinion when you base a recommendation.
There's the key, there's the key, is you have to watch when it's your opinion. There's the key, there's the key, is you have to watch when it's your opinion.
Right.
Right? And when that kind of opinion comes up though, it is okay to direct a question towards staff and say, and I'm trying to think of a good, of a good example, we'll use a comp plan. So the comp plan is one of those criteria, right? Does this conform with the comprehensive plan or not conform with the comprehensive plan? There could be an argument made that this did conform with the comprehensive plan, you know, staff's evaluating it. But does the comprehensive plan have in it a policy that says, we try to avoid doing exactly what you're concerned about, placing that level of density in close proximity to the single-family? You may or may not be aware of it because, have you read the whole comp plan yourself or not, right? So that's when you can direct a question towards staff and say, you know, staff, I didn't see this in here and I have this opinion or this concern. Under the XYZ criteria, is this a policy that we have in the city? You know? So that creates that interaction again to reinforce. Because the staff report, while they try to be as comprehensive as possible, it's hard to summarize everything that's in a comp plan, everything that's in the city policies, everything that's there. They're formulating for you hopefully a good staff report that's solid because they're also concerned about legal challenges. Okay? They're also concerned that they've got a consistency in their arguments.
So then the second question that I had was...
I'm going to interrupt you quick.
It's about 10 o'clock.
You need to extend your meeting, please.
We've got two minutes.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to extend the meeting.
So moved.
You got, for a time, yeah.
Yeah, it's not in definite...
If you leave it open-ended with me, we'll go for a long, long time.
I make a motion that we extend it for just five minutes.
Okay.
So till 10:05.
Okay. So, a motion was made by Commissioner Gardner and seconded by Commissioner McNair to extend the meeting till 10:05 PM, 7:20 AM. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
So then my last final question was, do we expose ourselves to a legal challenge if the staff report contains both because it's essentially laying the groundwork for the residential plan? Right. For someone to say, well, here, obviously, there is a conflict and are we laying the groundwork for someone to sue the city?
I'm going to, at the risk of offending the city attorney, I'm going to say there's a legal challenge to everything you do. Okay? So you have to be careful how close you hold that to your vest if it's preventing you from doing something that is going to add to the overall conversation, the discussion here, which is on the record, right? I think it's okay to ask about those conflicts and questions because every city has those conflicts and questions. It is a matter of what do you value more, right? And as long as you have a clear record of this discussion and you have a clear interaction, yes, is it going to be potentially challengeable? Sure. That other attorney who may oppose your recommendation or decision by the city council may say, hey, you know, they've got this other part in the comp plan, but everything is in the record and you have stated in your findings of fact or in your recommendations, this is what we believe outweighs that. Because in the golden criteria, remember, it's not that they have to meet all 10 criteria. It's not that they have to meet six of the 10 criteria. It can be one overriding criteria that you all say, this is the most important factor that we have considered for this case. And the other nine could be completely contradictory. And you could have an argument made that those nine outweigh, but the way the law is, all you need is really that one thing. If you believe the comp plan issue is the valuable issue and these other eight are secondary, you state that in your motion. We're doing this primarily because the comprehensive plan, which sets the direction for our community, says this, this, and this, and this recommendation backs that policy. That goes to court, Ryan knows this. It goes to court, you're on pretty solid footing.
You know, if we get real deep into the training on this, particularly if you are going to deny an application, if you're going to deny a rezoning, oftentimes, what I would recommend is that you actually make factual findings associated with that denial. So rather than just do a motion, you make factual findings. That makes your determination that much more defensible in terms of me going to court and having to defend it because then what the courts do is, they're not going to intrude upon or reluctant to intrude upon your factual findings. But if we don't make factual findings and we leave it open-ended, then guess what? The court gets to make all factual determinations.
Yeah. It's an interesting situation in that sense. And a lot of commissions and things will adopt the staff's findings from the recommendations as their findings of fact. And they'll make that as part of their motion to do exactly what Ryan's talking about. That now is clearly the statement of, we are adopting these findings of fact from staff as our findings of fact in the recommendation of this.
I have a question. I mean, just in the last six months or so, we've had two or three big public inputs. One of them that we denied, and I think as a commission, we felt that there was really no plan associated with that rezoning request and without a specific plan, there was really no criteria to advance it forward. The second was, one that ended up in the final presentation was very well laid out. Okay? And what I'm struggling with is when you believe that we're not ready to make a decision on something that is not really fully baked, we feel like our lane is, we don't want to get out of our lane, you know, where we're, you know, sentence or finding the fact, how do we slow this down to the time where you say, you know, really, we need some more time to consider all the things that need to be done? How do we do that without leaving ourselves or the city or the public in the lurch vaguely? How do we do that?
You have the ability to table an item. Now, you have to, depending on the public hearing process and things like that, there's times you have to table it to a date certain or to, you know, there's some specifics that are involved with that. But if the commission is really struggling with something, so like tonight, one of the things that might be in your toolbox is, there was no real public meeting or, not public meeting, neighborhood meeting prior to this. I've seen planning commissions go, we're going to hold this item, we've heard the public hearing, we're going to close the public hearing for that standpoint, but what we want to do is we want to table this on our decision with a recommendation that the applicant gets a neighborhood meeting and talks and tries to resolve some of these issues and bring it back to us. So there are things you can do in that sense. Nobody really likes doing that because it slows projects and that, but it does create sometimes that conversation where design solutions and things come about and you get a product through the process and you can go, okay, yeah, this has been adjusted as a result of the public hearing. As long as we can create that record, I'm sorry, we're getting close to 10:05.
I know, we're like...
Yeah.
20 seconds from 30 seconds.
So if we can table it, is this tabled then to the next meeting?
Yeah. Well, let's continue it. It's just a discussion item, so...
Do we need to admit a motion for that?
No.
No. No, we'll just bring it back. And like I said, I have five areas and they're all in or connected to some of this stuff, but for tonight, I thought there was a couple of really good things to make sure you kind of talked about. We'll talk about votes on plats too, out of tonight. Ryan's already smiling at me.
I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Gardner, seconded by Commissioner Bowden to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Meeting adjourned.